Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Yes.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harders. Mr. Chair, you have a form.
Thank you.
You're the presiding officer.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal on the meeting of June 4th, 2019?
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The June 4th, 2019 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 6th District.
Receive and file, please, and that will be the order.
We have nothing under road and bridge matters, Mr. Presiding Officer, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number 1.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 2, and that will be the order.
Item number 3.
Receive and file. Same motion for item number 4, and that will be the order.
Item number 5, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 6, all districts.
Receive, file, and refer the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 7, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 8, 7th District.
Receive and file. So ordered.
Item number 9, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfers be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, all districts.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12, all districts.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 14, 2nd District.
Receive and file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 17.
Same motion, same order.
Item number 18.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 19.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 20.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 21.
Receive, file, and the transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number...
I'm sorry.
I wanted to make sure on this one, this is in my district, Spanish Lake, so either co-sponsor or if I could sponsor this, I appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, so let the record reflect that Councilwoman Walton Gray is the sponsor or pro-sponsor. And motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Number 22 now.
Item number 22, all districts.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as recommended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Yes, sir. Under other communications, item number 1.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 2.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 3.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 4.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 5.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 6, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Before we proceed, I believe Councilwoman Gray has something.
Yes, point of personal privilege, please. I just would like to recognize the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and thank you guys for coming today and doing your civic duty to bring something that's very important to our attention, and if you stand and be recognized, I appreciate it. I'd like to say...
Thank you, ladies. Do you want to come up and speak?
Oh, no.
Okay.
She's on the...
So typically, at this point, we would have the report of the county executive. The county executive is en route, and I believe he will be here prior to the end of public forum, so we will suspend rules at that point to have his report at that time. So with that said, we can proceed with item number 6, I think.
Report to special committees.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
And under public forum, we have six speakers this evening, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay. So looking forward to hearing your comments. I'd ask you all to remember that the council rules tries to limit the amount of time for each statement to three minutes. Obviously, we're willing to give some grace, but I would appreciate it if you would keep that in mind as you give your statements, that we have a three-minute rule that we'd like to at least try to adhere to within reason. So thank you all for that.
First speaker this evening is Kim Chamberlain.
I am going to be Kim Beck and not Chamberlain. I'm not speaking.
Then Tashonda Troop will be our first speaker this evening.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Tashonda Troop, and I live in Pine Line. I had a whole nother speech prepared, but I got a phone call while I was sitting here, and it looks like we lost another inmate. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. He was an inmate that was in St. Louis County, and he had been there, and he was transferred to Bontaire, and shortly when he got there, he died. So that's another inmate that we've lost. Another inmate that didn't get proper care, and he should have gotten care from St. Louis County before he was transferred to Bontaire. So I just want you guys to understand that this is continuing to happen. They're not getting the care that they need over there. Something has to give. These investigations, they are long and slow. Something needs to be done. Those inmates need help. They're dying. I don't know why this inmate died, but he needed some care. And obviously, he didn't get it at St. Louis County Justice Center. So that's another inmate that we have. Lieutenant Colonel Doyle is not here because he has to do an investigation on an inmate that died in the county jail. Well, he didn't die there, but it started there. Hours after he was transferred somewhere else, he died. So we need to work on this. The process is being too slow. This investigation, these policies, these procedures, these medical needs to these inmates, the care of these inmates, we need to get on top of this. It doesn't need to be slow. It needs to be a process, and it needs to start now. These investigations, they're taking too long. They're not giving us any answers. These inmates are dying. How would you all feel if those were your loved ones? I've lost one, and it hurts bad, and you don't get over it. So we shouldn't have to keep enduring this because something or someone over there is dropping the bombs, or we need something. We need something. So that's all I have to say for today. I don't know if you all were aware, but I'm just letting you know that we lost another inmate, and it's sad.
Thank you, Tashonda.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the record will reflect that Councilman Harder has joined the meeting.
Very well.
Next speaker is Kimberly Beck.
Good evening, President, Mr. President, and the rest of the council. My name is Kimberly Beck. As they said, I'm the president of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Gamma Omega Chapter, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our 343 members. This evening, we come to you as the third-oldest graduate chapter of our 111-year-old sisterhood. We are known throughout the community, and particularly here in St. Louis County, for our work with shelters, with food banks, and most recently, in our partnership with the St. Louis County Continuum of Care Project Homeless Connect, where we served as volunteers. Not only do we volunteer and give our time, but we advocate for the rights of citizens here in St. Louis County, as over half of us are St. Louis County residents. And today, we come to you to discuss early voting and automatic registration. We do have an ask for you. We have right now Missouri as one of only 13 states who do not provide for early voting. And this system is over 100 years old, the Tuesday election system, and how we have to shuffle our days around, those of us who are now mobile, caregivers traveling around, taking kids to practice, and all those things, and one day to vote unless you have a very valid excuse is not sufficient. And so we came here to advocate for the rights of all citizens, as we know that is important to you, just as it is to us. And we think that early voting will allow every citizen the right. We are partnering with the Women of League of Women Voters, who also advocate for early voting. We also want you to take a look at the folders that we provided to each of you, and in there is a copy of House Bill Number 994, which creates a provision for early voting, and the House Joint Resolution Number 5, which modifies voter eligibility and creates provision for early voting and automatic voter registration. It's these two things that we think will help allow all citizens of St. Louis County to be able to vote. We also put in some news articles for you to read. We know this is just not our opinion, but there is also research that indicates that if we move to early voting, it will allow for smoother voting and for citizens to be treated fairly, so that if there are issues at the polls, we don't have just one day to work it out. We will have some time to work out those issues. So on the last page, you'll see that we are requesting from St. Louis County Council to exercise your very considerable influence by advocating and issuing a public statement in support of early voting in Missouri. We would love to hear from you, and we desire your support, as we are your strong supporters here in St. Louis County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Next speaker is Mary Jane Thompson.
Good evening. It's great to see you again, Councilman Trachis and County Executive Page. Thank you to all members of the county council. Mary Jane Thompson, I'm the executive director for the Greater St. Louis Chapter of the American Red Cross, and I just wanted to give a brief update to the community about Red Cross's response and efforts to help the community recover from the flooding that is occurring. It's historic flooding, and we appreciate the time and interest that you all have taken to visit our shelter in South County, and we are still there. We're here to help the members of our community get through this troubled time. And I think you all know about the Red Cross, but we're in it for the long haul. We're not able to get in and do as many damage assessments as we will. Once the waters go down in our community and the Greater St. Louis Chapter, there's many areas that are affected by the flooding. So what we'll do after we get our damage assessments in is help community members by providing items for them in their recovery, as well as multi-agency resource centers, where after damage assessments are done, Red Cross, which we are a proud member of the United Way, will work with other community agencies to ensure that community members can come in and have a resource center in one place, where they can visit different organizations that can get them through and help them with food, clothing, and shelter, which is what we do immediate needs, and then longer-term needs. So that is where we're at, and throughout all of this, with seven shelters in the state of Missouri and one here in St. Louis County, we also respond to fires. So we responded to 29 home fires in our region last night, and seven were in our chapter. Two of those were in the St. Louis County. So it's important to remember that while we have all of these volunteers, and I think you met them, they were from all over the country, because we've been in a disaster response in our region for several months, starting with flooding in St. Joseph, Missouri, and all the tornadoes that have hit recently. And now we're here in our local community with concerns about the historic flooding. So we have people from around the country. My friend Mike's here to support us, from executive director from Montgomery, Alabama, and we're here to support. So Red Cross will be here. We have people helping us get through this, and then those fires I mentioned, our local volunteers who are in our offices 24/7 respond to those fires on an ongoing basis. So we're here to thank you for your support and just keep you updated. So if anyone has any questions or wants a briefing, I am available. Just please call our Greater St. Louis Chapter offices and know that we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Next speaker is Natasha Troop.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Natasha Troop, and I live in Florissant. I come today to speak regarding what's happening with the jail. I don't know if you're aware, there's been another death in the jail, so that makes four for the year. There's been nothing done with y'all investigations, and I think it's time for you to call for help from the feds or some, because somewhere, somebody's dropping a bomb over in St. Louis County, and they can't keep dropping like flies every other month with nobody being accountable for that. You also have an oversight committee that is not meeting, and I would like to know how do we get on this committee, because somewhere besides you all need to be able to look over what they're doing, because nobody's being accountable. Everybody's saying, pointing the fingers, and when you get through, everybody just pointing at each other. So somewhere, we need to figure out what's going on, and families can't keep going through this. It's just ridiculous. Come on. Y'all, you can't check them out in the beginning. Nobody can get health care. Nobody can be accountable. Nobody can go to jail. Nobody can get nothing. We're receiving nothing from you all, nothing. No change rules. Nobody's on the boards, no nothing. Just a talk every week. That's it. And death. That's it. And I'm sorry. It just can't work, and it's not working. So we need to do something, and we need to figure out how do we, where do we go to get on these boards or figure out how to make these boards active, because you all are doing nothing. So that's what I come today to ask about the boards, and also for you all to recognize that something needs to be done, urgent, right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Angie Zorich.
Hello, Angie Zorich. I live in Oakville, Missouri. In light of what's happened, I guess, this afternoon with you guys, I guess, our jail, St. Louis County Jail transferred someone to Bontaire, and within an hour, that person was dead. So I think that's our fault. I think we should be held accountable. I think that we personally should be held accountable, since we have known this is a problem for over three months, actually, since the beginning of the year. I shouldn't say that, because as council members and as a citizen of this community, this isn't the first time that we've had a death in the jail, and I guess it's not going to be the last, because we're not really being proactive. And I understand, your office did contact me and tell me that now you are not willing to talk to me because of my litigation with St. Louis County, which has nothing to do with the jail or the people dying in the jail. But Natasha Troop was going to attend that meeting with me, so maybe I would ask you to reach out to her if you don't want me on a board. Maybe, you know, she's a smart girl, and her nephew is dead because of the poor oversight in the jail. I also, you know, since Wesley Bell's office has declined to charge anyone, and we know that somebody, a lot of bodies that work at the jail, sat back and watched a 20-year-old boy suffer and die from a very curable leukemia. That's uncalled for. That's unacceptable. So I would urge all of you to reach out to the Attorney General's Office. I think we need an outside investigation. For whatever reason, we haven't been able to figure out what happened over there, and I think it's really important that we do. Thanks.
Thank you. George.
Yes. I would bring the council's attention to other communication, item number 21, and I apologize, that communication was in fact addressed to Councilwoman Walton Gray, and so it should have been listed under her district in the agenda. We inadvertently omitted that, and so with the council's permission, I would correct the record to reflect that, and if, obviously, if Councilwoman Walton Gray wants to go back and make a motion, and you're willing to allow that, that would be probably appropriate.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think if she just wants to make the motion so that she's ordering the legislation...
That'd be fine.
At this point.
So I would just read other communication, item number 21, again.
Receive, file, and the appropriate transfer be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, that was the wrong...
What is it?
Is that it?
This is it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Please. Second, please.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I appreciate that.
So at this point, I'd like to... One moment. This is for the move to suspend the rules, so that we could acknowledge the presence of the county executive and give him the opportunity to give his report. So moved. Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Executive, floor is yours.
Thank you, and my apologies for my late arrival. I actually didn't think I could make it at all tonight, and had previously submitted my report in writing. I had a family member that had a surgical procedure yesterday out of state, and did not expect it to get out as early as we did this morning, but it went really well, and he's doing fine, and we're happy to be back in St. Louis. First, we have to address the sad news that we heard this afternoon from the Missouri Department of Corrections. An individual and their care who had previously been incarcerated at the St. Louis County Justice Center passed away this morning, and I've been assured by the state that the incident will be investigated. They will lead on the investigation since...
What's his name?
They will lead on the investigation since it happened under their jurisdiction, but since that person was also under our care, I've asked our staff to also investigate and see what we can learn about what happened, and when we have that information, we'll report it back to the council. We're definitely sad and disappointed and upset to hear of this. This is not what we hope to see in our county jail, and we're in the process of making some changes. I know that our staff has contacted the family member of this individual and offered condolences from the county. We are in the process of a comprehensive review of the Justice Center from a public health standpoint and from a corrections standpoint, personnel, procedure, policies, and performances, and the county is doing everything we can to address concerns when we find them, and we'll continue to try and learn more about this event today. We've also been challenged with flooding throughout the region. Last week, Councilman Trachis and I visited the shelter in South County. As you know, the river crested Monday. It's not expected to drop below this flood stage until Friday at the earliest, and we're expecting another two inches of rain, so we'll continue to watch and keep our sandbag walls in place until we see what happens. We won't know anything until Sunday for sure. So far, we expect the cost to the county to be at least $100,000, including manpower, material, and equipment. We'll have another estimate when we're ready for cleanup, but so far, we filled over 25,000 sandbags and used over 800 tons of sand. The community's efforts to protect our neighbors from flooding and to provide for the displaced people and band together in this time has really been inspiring. I know several council members have been visiting with as many affected individuals as possible, and the performance of our county workers has really been exemplary. Regarding our ongoing battle with the opioid epidemic, I'm asking the county council this evening to pass legislation requiring all health care providers to report non-fatal opioid overdoses in addition to what's already reported as fatal overdoses. We believe that this epidemic is a disease, and as in any epidemic, we want to know when we have an incident in addition to when we have a loss of life. Tracking the non-fatal opioid overdoses will allow us to better understand where this is happening, why it's happening, and allow us to assess our resources and put our resources in the right place. This legislation really is a testament to our administration's commitment to fighting this crisis in collaboration with our region's health care system partners. In other activities, I convened a meeting this Friday of my cabinet. In addition to brief reports from our department heads, we also started building bridges between the county council and cabinet members. Presiding Officer Ernie Trachis was there to report from the council as a special guest. On Friday, I joined Mayor Lyda Cruzen at a Business Journal State of St. Louis event, and we shared our perspectives on the better-together process, and I observed what I thought was a clear example of many affected individuals and institutions being left out of the conversation, many folks who had a stake in this potential merger, and we hope that those people will be listened to moving forward. I emphasize that we need good ideas and good people from our business community to help us get things done in our county government. I want to bring us everyone up to date on our revenue picture. At our council meeting on May 21st, I reported that sales tax revenue was down 7% in May. It's down 3% in June, not quite as much, but still down from what we had expected or projected. Meanwhile, our public safety sales tax is up 4%. We're not quite sure why this is happening, but our budget department is investigating this anomaly, and we'll let you know when we have more information. But we'll continue to monitor our revenues and try and come up with an accurate projection as we start planning for the 2020 annual budget process. The bottom line is our budget challenges from the past remain unchanged. We still have our needs of the county government outpacing our revenue growth and expectations, and so far, revenue is insufficient to cover the needs of our county government, but we'll continue to have this conversation. I want to also share the same message that I shared with our cabinet directors on our meeting on Friday. I reiterated to our county officials our intent to run county government professionally, responsibly, and with collaboration with all of our hard-working employees, and I asked them to keep in mind these guiding principles: adding value to our residents' lives, being good stewards of our public funds, viewing ethical compliance as a foundation, fostering a collaborative spirit within departments, and when working with council members and other departments and stakeholders outside of county government; growing as professionals; encouraging innovation; and embracing equity. In the coming weeks, I'll meet with each of these directors to discuss how they intend to implement these principles. Finally, I attended an annual board meeting last week of Heat Up, Cool Down charity. St. Louis County is proud to work side by side with this organization, using HUD funds to manage the utility program and promoting public awareness of being without air conditioning or utilities in the summer can be a serious health issue for many of our vulnerable neighbors. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. We've already concluded public forums, so I think we can proceed with introduction of bills at this time.
Bill Number 148, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a reimbursement payment of $3,800 for expenses incurred by the Department of Transportation related to the 2019 Spirit of St. Louis Air Show and STEM Expo, and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill Number 149, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a change order to a contract with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated for engineering services in connection with renovation of the former emergency operations center, St. Louis County Public Works, Number 17-29-OC. Bill Number 150, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance... Bill number 150, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $55,134.84 from the Missouri Department of Social Services, appropriated in the same for support of the Kathy J. Wyman Shelter, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract under Securis Technologies Incorporated for provision of inmate telephone, video visitation, and law library services at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill number 152, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance adopting the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as the standard for incident management by St. Louis County. Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County revised ordinance since 1974, amended traffic code by enacting and adding one new provision to Schedule 4. Bill number 154, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance amending ordinance number 27,251 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a contract with Utility Associates Incorporated for provision of in-car and body worn cameras for the police department. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold Bill number 17.
Bill number 17 is held.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill 20. Bill 20 is held.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill number 102.
Bill number 102 is held.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 139. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 139. It's perfected.
Bill number 140, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 140. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 140 is perfected.
Bill number 141, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 141. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries Bill number 141 is perfected.
Bill number 142, introduced by Councilwoman Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 142. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill 142 is perfected.
Bill number 143, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 143. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill number 143 is perfected.
Bill number 144, introduced by Councilwoman Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 144. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill 144 is perfected.
Bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Trakus. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Okay. Can you read the substitute, please?
Yes, yes, sir. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 145, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance appropriating the amount of $1,361, a proposition P funds from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of compensation to Utility Associates Incorporated in connection with the contract authorized by ordinance number 27,251 as amended.
Thank you. A move to adopt sub bill number 1 for bill number 145.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'm sorry.
To clarify, this is just to adopt the sub, and then we go back and?
Go back and decide if we want to suspend the rules and perfect tonight or hold it on the agenda.
Okay. I would, you know, I would encourage a hearing about this. I'm very interested in discussing how we can promote accountability and transparency within our police department while also working to enhance officer safety and civilian safety, and so I think this is a conversation we need to have, and this is a good vehicle to do that. So I would like to not move forward without a hearing.
So just so I understand, are you opposed to adopting the sub bill?
We can adopt. I'm okay with adopting the sub bill.
So let's just take a step back. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the sub bill 1 for bill number 145. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Sub bill 1 for bill number 145 is adopted, and then we'll hold the sub bill number 1 for 145 on the agenda.
Thank you.
And we'll schedule a hearing.
Thank you.
Bill number 146, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
I move to perfect Bill number 146.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill 146 is perfected.
Bill number 147, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 147. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries Bill 147 is perfected.
Moving on to final passage, Mr. Presiding Officer. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 76, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
A move to hold substitute bill number 1 for bill number 76. And sub bill 1 will be held.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 83, introduced by Councilmembers Trakus, Harder, and Fitch.
Same motion, a move to hold substitute bill for bill number 83. And that will be the order, and the bill will be held.
Bill number 125, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 125.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, bill number 125, there are five ayes.
So 125 is finally passed.
Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmembers Trakus and Trakus-Bclancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 133.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Go ahead.
Bill number 133, there are five ayes.
Very well, bill number 133 is finally passed.
Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of bill number 134. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 134, there are five ayes.
Bill number 134 is finally passed.
Bill number 135, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of bill number 135. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 135, there are five ayes.
Bill number 135 is finally passed.
Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
We had a hearing on this bill today, and there's some interest in introduction of a sub bill, so because of that interest and the importance of this particular matter, we're going to hold bill number 136 on the agenda pending the introduction of a sub bill, I believe, by next Tuesday.
Bill number 137, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of bill number 137.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 137, there are five ayes.
Bill number 137 is finally passed.
Bill number 138, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
I move for final passage of bill number 138.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill number 138, there are five ayes.
Bill number 138 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions. We have one resolution this evening, Mr. Presiding Officer. Resolution number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
This is a resolution honoring Margie Corcoran for his long service as city manager of the City of Maplewood. I move for adoption of resolution number 1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number 1, there are five ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number 1 is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, sir. Item number 1, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business, same motion for items 2 and 3, and that will be the order.
Item number 4, 7th District.
Please hold. No orders.
Item number 5, 3rd District.
Please hold. That'll be the order.
And, Mr. Presiding Officer, moving on to new business, we have four prepared orders this evening, orders marked 02 through 05.
I move for the adoption of order number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Presiding, that's the one that you chose?
Well, you didn't want to move.
One moment, please. All right, I'm going to ask that this be held if that's what I'm going to do.
I move to hold order number 1.
You just have to not make a motion.
And where am I? 2. I move for the adoption of order number 2 and order number 4.
Is there a second? One moment. For 2 and 4, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, orders 2 and 4 are adopted.
I move for the adoption of order number 3.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.